Call this meeting to order, please stand for the invocation given by myself. Silence your electronic devices so we can conduct our business. Please join me in the Lord's Prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. We have smacked temptation with heresy.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Just a quick note, you should have an updated agenda.
Yes.
Because one of the items is not going to take place today. Item 57, 2024 is not going to be taken care of.
Yep.
Public comments?
Chair, do you want to register?
Okay. Tonight, we have a public... Each speaker will use the podium. Please state your name and address before we give in your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Counsel will not engage in debate with the speaker. First bell, you have 30 seconds left. And please wrap it up because on the second floor, we'll have to stop you.
Good evening, City Council members. I'm here tonight to just ask for a meeting between the City Council or the pertinent people and the businesses affected by the site construction at Alba Place. I just want to have a sit-down meeting where I can have a back-and-forth because I really do believe that you guys can give us answers that will put our fears to rest. I...I'm not trying to be contentious with you. I'm just trying to gain information. And I don't know how this process works. I've never heard of a seeker before. I've never heard of a foil before. I've never heard of all these comments. I'm just trying to gain information. I don't believe you understand the undue stress that this has placed on the businesses along Washington Avenue. We are all just trying to go to work, do our jobs, and make a living. Every day, each patron, patient, employee, and citizen of Batavia approaches us to complain about the egregious lack of parking at our offices. We still do not have handicap parking. We appreciate the new plan to open up one row of parking, but I beg of you that you allow us to have a two-way conversation regarding the next two years, two years that will deeply affect our businesses. I want to say my words very carefully because I have no ill will towards anybody. This has just affected my life immensely over the last couple of months. I'm not sleeping. I'm stressed to the max because my property value has changed. I'm trying to sell a business, and that is all halted because our whole parking lot was closed off. That scares people. Then they don't want to buy businesses in downtown Batavia because they find out our City Council can just close a parking lot without any warning. A week's warning is not enough time. When the seeker was done years ago, I'm reading up on all this stuff now. It said, "It is not anticipated that this proposed project will create an increase in traffic during the operation. The project site is currently a paved parking lot used for public parking for the surrounding commercial and medical facilities. A secured parking area for police department vehicles will be located in the western portion of the project area. The parking lots surrounding the project area will remain open to the public." That's what the seeker says. If I'm reading that wrong, I'm reading that wrong. I understand you have a job to do. I understand you need to pave it. But for eight weeks, we sat with nothing happening, and for eight weeks, that parking could have been opened. We had three people fall on Washington Avenue, and by the grace of God, they're okay, and we have not had a lawsuit. Your vision statement for City Council says, "We consider our community to include its citizens, its business owners and employees, and all those whom we interact with." The first thing says, "We will continuously build upon our rich entrepreneurial history, providing an infrastructure and support for businesses of all types to grow and flourish." Live through your mission statement instead of going around it. Work with us, just talk with us, please. We are human beings. We all live in the same community. We all want to maintain this community. "We will encourage and provide opportunities for the physical, mental, emotional, and cultural learning and enrichment of all our community members at every life stage." Our handicap people were not considered in this project. "Our community members will be actively involved in the decisions we make and active in bringing our plans to life." We were not involved in this decision. We were never told there was a meeting about a seeker and that you have four months to say that you don't agree with it or to give our opinion. I...it baffles my mind that this could happen, and we have no idea this is happening. It says, "For thriving downtown." We're not thriving right now. We're stressed. "Our community members will enjoy the feeling of safety as they live, work, and interact in our city." Three people have fallen on Washington Avenue to date because you take an elderly couple, and they pull up to our office, and the husband says, "You got to get out here, there's no parking." And they're getting out quickly, and then the three people fell on Washington Avenue. I could go on with that. But your city mission statement, your vision statement, is to work with us, to consider us, the citizens, the businesses, the people in the community. I don't think this project did that. I think this project was something that we needed, and oh my gosh, I'm so for the police station. You have no idea. Like, I was so offended by your remarks, Council President of the last meeting, because you said that you were disappointed enough that we don't want our police officers to have a safe, wonderful working environment. We want that. We just want to be considered in the whole process. Part of this discussion that I want to have with you, if given the opportunity, is that we are really concerned about snow removal next year. When plowing happens on Washington Avenue, it plows to our sidewalks, and our sidewalks don't get plowed. And you can't hop over a snowplow to then get to our sidewalks. Also, we have cameras on our sidewalks, and our sidewalks right now are being utilized 10 times more than they ever were before, so I have much more traffic on my particular property. I don't want to take any more of your time. I'm just...I'm begging you to have a meeting with the business owners, to just sit down because, as I just did with Sean, he was able to put one of our fears to rest by telling us that the employees of the police department will not be parking on the outside, but they will be in that secured facility. So please just sit down with us. That's all we're asking. I'm not looking to berate anybody. I'm not looking to attack anybody. I just want to get information so that we can put our minds at rest and assure our patients that they're going to be in a safe environment. Thank you for your time.
One question. If you retain the lawyer?
Yes.
Then, George?
Under the circumstances, if counsel's been retained, I would suggest to counsel, it's not prudent to engage in back-and-forth dialogue if there's a potential litigation threat.
I don't want to sue you.
Okay, your time is up, thank you.
Second thing I would say, counsel, is there was an update issued April 30th relative to Phase 1, Phase 2 parking. There's nothing more to add to that at this point in time relative to timing. When there aren't further updates, they'll be provided by the project team.
Anyone else come in and vote for them? Is there any more? Communications? Next council meeting will be held Tuesday, May 24th at 7:00 PM. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. You've given a copy of the March 2024 financials. Are there any questions or concerns on those? Any additions or concerns, questions?
Council President, I just have an update as these are March financials. 97.4% of property taxes were paid. That's up from previous years where we were collecting about 96, 95%. Sales tax this year is up 2.67%. In your financials, you don't see that final payment coming in. So the final number on sales tax will be 7.795 million. We budgeted 7.763, so we're about $200,000 to the good on sales tax revenue for the 2024 fiscal year. Another item to note on the revenue side, Northside Meadows paid their taxes and their fees this year. So you're seeing larger-than-normal revenue in those line items. And we did receive and record the $440,000 VLT payment. Some of that payment was recognized as going towards law enforcement for net activities last summer. On the expense side, departments were issued their instructions to do budget adjustments. I can tell you right now, budgets that will be over include legal fees and police. However, many other budget lines have come in lower than expected. At this time and prior to the audit, I do not anticipate having to use the appropriated fund balance that we scheduled to use this year. And hopefully, after the full audit is completed, we may be able to increase our unassigned fund balance to 25% and put some funds into reserves. Thank you.
Rachel, can you go over the property tax?
Sure. So when...yep, when you look at the property tax, what we do is the entire property tax is a receivable. So at the beginning of the year, you see it at 100% because no matter what that revenue is due to the city, whether it's paid in that fiscal year or like Northside Meadows, it comes in later, we book it back to that previous receivable. So this year, prior to having any receivables, we collected 97.4% of the property tax.
And that was versus 94%?
In '21, it was 96%. In '22 and '23, it was 95%. So we are doing tracking to make sure we're watching where that is coming in. It's a good sign. It means that the majority of the folks in our city are able to and do pay their property taxes. And we...we think that's a really good number for this year. The remainder of that is a receivable that sits out there until such time as the owner pays or it goes to foreclosure auction, and we receive funds that way to apply back. Yep, thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, Mr. President. I just want to give you a quick update.
Well, let's approve these financials.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Financial question or...?
No.
Okay.
We all approve the financials?
Yes.
Okay, Bob, did you want to wait for a minute?
Sure, I can...
Because I got covered under unfinished business. That's good.
All right, fine.
So you've all been given a copy of the April 2024 minutes. I think there's two sets in there, Conference and a Business, if I'm not mistaken, if I write it correctly. Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, so we in consensus to approve the April 24 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, those are approved. We have several agenda items today. We'll sign those now. Item 52, 2024, the committees and boards. Ms. Briggs? Item 53, 2024, some more committees and boards. Mr. McGinnis? 54, 2024, the tree doctor trimming removal. Mr. Vealy? 55, 2024, the Kohaktin water main replacement project seeker resolution. Mr. Twitchell? 56, 24, the license agreement with the GRV Properties, Eli Fish. Mr. Baikowski? 58, 2024, the K9 committed fund balance. Ms. Briggs? 59, 2024, the committed fund balance to unassigned fund balance for the Creek Park. Ms. Schmidt? 60, 2024, the unassigned fund balance for the zoning code update. Mr. McGinnis? Resolution to close out capital projects. Vealy? Resolution to amend the police department budget to reflect the Byrne Grant. Mr. Baikowski? And a resolution for police departments. City manager...or City Attorney's report?
Yes, nothing specific to report on this time. Would you remain busy, it would cost all spectrums out.
Any questions for the City? City Manager's report?
Yep, just a note. We took the strategic plan and tried to make it simpler to view. So hopefully, the citizens and residents, instead of looking at a lengthy Excel sheet, can look at something a little more graphically pleasing. So we will have this on the website and be putting it out in social media. I give credit to our grants administrator, who is also very good with graphics as well. She has many hidden talents. So thank you to Julie Daly for doing that for us. So we will be moving forward using this in our presentations and in the budget book as you get it, but wanted to share that with counsel tonight. We also are waiting to see a few items that are outstanding you may be interested in. Weld D. and the Aquifer. Right now, the Aquifer, or when I wrote these notes, was 14 feet short. We've gained two more feet, but we're still in near-drought conditions with the Aquifer. We are doing a drinking water source protection study with all stakeholders from the town, the county, DPW, and city management to see how we continue to protect the Aquifer into the future. Even with the decommissioning of the water plant at some point in the future, that is a huge resource for the city of Batavia, and we need to find ways to protect it. So that goes right along with the Weld D. application that Seneca Powers put in to the DEC. There was a hearing a year and a half ago or so. We still do not have any information from DEC on whether they're going to approve the withdrawal of Seneca Powers of that water from our Aquifer, but I dare say it will be devastating if that approval goes through. So I will keep you informed on that. A few other items. We are looking at a new technology. So we've talked a lot about lead lines and needing to get our initial plan solidified by October, and that'll consist of about 400, what we call potholes. Those are typically done in between the city's portion of the line and the residence portion of the line. There's a new technology that can look at the whole line without potholing, but it does require getting into residents' homes. So we are looking to RFP out to see if that technology will work, and we're also coupling that with meter replacements at the same time. So while the company's inside checking the lines for materiality, they can also do a meter replacement. Unfortunately, we have not been successful with meter grants the past two years, so we're going to have to go ahead and start replacing those. Our equipment's so old that if one of our reader guns breaks, we only have one in reserve, they do not make parts for it. So it's kind of a critical thing that we do need to spend the resources on these meters, and unfortunately, we weren't awarded the grant money. Counsel did approve that in a capital project, though, this year, so we can move forward. Just some other notes. We've been working frequently on water and wastewater the past month. We are looking at bringing in a new GIS system so we can map our water lines so that when there is a break on a pipe, you can identify it. You can take a picture of the pipe, the fix, and then it's there forever in a GIS system for our staff. So we are a little bit behind on that infrastructure mapping and GIS, but we're hoping to get that going this summer. And we've also brought on an intern who is a UB graduate who is contemplating going to SUNY Brockport... What's my degree? Masters in Public Administration. So she will be with us for a few months over the summer, working on projects, learning about various departments, to determine if she does want to go into city management. So that is my update. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, if the DEC approves that permit for Seneca, do we...does that bind us in any way that we have to provide the water?
So, no, they would be drawing raw water directly out of the Aquifer for their processes. So the DEC would be making a hydrological determination to say that the Aquifer can support not only our draw on the Aquifer, a WACCA's draw on the Aquifer, and now this third party, which is Seneca Powers.
So do they have their own well?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah.
Rachel, how about the egg park? They're drawing water out of our Aquifer?
Nope, they were not ever issued a permit to draw water. So the egg park is primarily serviced by Monroe County Water at this point, while the city services a WACCA with water. And over the life of Phase 3, when the county gets that up and running, the goal is the plant will shut down, and a WACCA will be getting Monroe County Water plus still using their Aquifer draw. But that doesn't mean that there might not be a scenario where the Aquifer is still used, the plant is still used, just for a private business capacity. So it's still a major resource.
If you want to do the reinforcement, just take a walk through the wet park.
Yeah, you can cross all the way over, can't you? Yep.
I remember when you could not get anywhere near the island.
Yep. Yep, so it's...I mean, and you're looking at Stafford and the water issues they're having. I think the county will be putting out their public service announcements on water conservation again this year because even though we're making a lot of improvements at the plant, we're just not keeping up with demand as different agriculture businesses come online and different water districts come online. It's just been very, very difficult to keep up. With that, the county is going to start doing what they call a source supply change study where they will be targeting six to 10 homes that we know have lead lines in them and doing hydrological studies of the new water that'll be coming in. So we'll be helping with that and getting the results as that moves forward.
Bob, you have something?
Yeah, I just want to give an update. The parade's coming along pretty good. We have a lot of interest. We have veterans that want to participate, but they can't walk. They're getting up there in years. We have a need for anyone with convertibles that would like to volunteer. That would be a big help. I know there aren't a lot of convertibles like there used to be, but we have a need for that. Any council members participating, please drop me an email and let me know because I'm putting together the group with... And the state senator promised he'd be here, so it looks good. So all we need is...
I'll be there, you know?
Great weather, which we've had every year.
Thanks for jinxing it. That's not going to bode well, I don't think. All right, new business. Item 52, 2024, Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to appoint members to various city committees, boards, audit advisory.
Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Vealy?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 53...or Resolution 53-24, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to appoint members to various city committees and boards, in this case, the board of assessment.
Seconded by Mr. Baikowski. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Vealy?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Resolution 54-24, Mr. Vealy, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into agreement with the Tree Doctor Inc. for the trimming and removal of city trees contract 2024-25.
Seconded by Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns?
I have a question. Do they...when they trim the trees, are they taking the trimmings with them or are they using the yard waste?
They typically use the yard waste when they're working for the city.
Okay, because the other day, I was at the yard waste, and it looks like it's already getting quite a pile. I think...are we having a lot more material show up there now?
The first four weeks that it's open every year is extremely heavy, and then you'll see it start to back off a little bit. But it's very common for it to grow fast over the first month. What I'm seeing back there is pretty average to what we've been seeing every year.
Well, we see an increase in costs this year, you'd think. It looks like there's a lot more material.
I believe we will see an increased cost in the rainy month.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Sorry, Councilmember Haley?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 55, 2024, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution for the city of Batavia Kohaktin Water Main Replacement Project Seeker Resolution with the intent to declare the lead agency status.
Seconded by Mr. Vealy. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Vealy?
Yes.
Resolution 56, 2024, Mr. Baikowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to approve an access license agreement with HRV Properties, Inc.
Seconded by Mr. Twitchell. Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Vealy?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 58, 2024, Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize the addition of funds to K9 committed fund balance.
Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Vealy?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 59, 2024, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution transferring 15,000 dollars from committed fund balance to unassigned fund balance in the Creek Park maintenance one and one remaining study.
Seconded by Mr. Vealy. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Vealy?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 60, 2024, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to release and transfer $2,215.61 from committed subbalance to unassigned fund balance for zoning code update and future land use planning.
Seconded by Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Vealy?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Resolution 61, 2024, Mr. Vealy, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to close all capital projects.
Seconded by Mr. Twitchell. Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Vealy?
Yes.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 62, 2024, Mr. Baikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend the 2024-2025 police department budget to reflect the receipt of a New York State FY 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $36,400.
Seconded by Mr. Vealy. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Vealy?[1707.23] Council member Beely?
Yes.
Council member Twitchell?
Yes.
Council member McGinnis?
Yes.
Council member Briggs?
Yes.
Council member Schmidt?
Yes.
And resolution sixty-three, twenty-twenty-four, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution to declare police department equipment surplus for the purpose of disposal.
Seconded by Mr. Baikowski. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Council member Schmidt?
Yes.
Council member Baikowski?
Yes.
Council member Jankowski?
Yes.
Council member Beely?
Yes.
Council member Twitchell?
Yes.
Council member McGinnis?
Yes.
Council member Briggs?
Yes.
Beely, would you like to take a seat?
There you go.
Yes, thank you, council president. Whereas Article seven, section one oh five, one D of the Parliament Office of Law, presents a legislative document, to let an executive session discuss a proposed penalty of curating. Whereas Article seven, section one oh five, one F of the Parliament Office of Law, presents a legislative document, to let an executive session discuss a settlement of financial debt, or employment history, or promotion of corporation, or barriers leading to the appointment, appointment, promotion, devotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of certain promotion of corporation. Now there will be resolved by the Council of the City of Batavia, in a power approval of this motion, the city council is hereby to do as there is to be presented session.
Seconded by Ms. Briggs. Call the roll, please.
Council member Beely?
Yes.
Council member Twitchell?
Yes.
Council member McGinnis?
Yes.
Council member Briggs?
Yes.
Council member Schmidt?
Yes.
Council member Baikowski?
Yes.
Council member Jankowski?
Yes.